All right, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Lumbee. Jersey. Oscar Lou.
Here.
Genslinger. Sonny.
Here.
Penny.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Proposed agenda has been provided in the packet of information. Does anybody want to have a conflict of interest? Yeah? The agenda wants to approve. If not, let's move on to the agenda. The agenda has been provided. Uh, here to do I here wanting to approve it as presented.
Um, item eight, I have east six, it should be east four.
Okay. Look at that change. Move to a further with the change.
Right.
Move consecutive that the agenda be approved with the change. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to go. Go, all fair to say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Uh, minutes of the meeting of, uh, May twenty-third were provided in the packet. Uh, any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Move consecutive that the motion, vote to be made to approve the minutes. There's a discussion on that motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to go. All fair to say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Next meeting should be the twenty-seventh of this month. Do I hear a motion for the blanket? So.
Second.
Move consecutive that the blanket for the next meeting be established as the twenty-seventh of June at noon. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All fair to say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Additional use permit, uh, Pitsey Chiropractic Clinic at three seventeen West Thirteenth. Has applied for a conditional use for a parking facility located at three seventeen West Thirteenth. Legally described as lot five on twenty-seven Capitol Edition, City of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. Said real property is, uh, is owned R four Hyzen sixteen. Talk to us a little bit about that, Mark, please.
Uh, published in the paper. Neighbors were notified of it. You had four, uh, responses in your packet that were in favor of it. Um, you may recall there was a fire in the house, uh, a few months ago. Um, they have since taken the garage from the rear, moved that off the lot. Um, Pitsey Chiropractic is actually at thirteen twenty-one, um, North Sandborns. They own both lots. They are just wanting to put a parking lot in the backside of block three seventeen. And that is a conditional use under the zoning in R four. Um, they're just planning for future development for that area there. Uh, Tiffany's here, if you have any questions for her at all.
House went and disappeared?
I hope so.
You want to talk to us about anything?
Um, it's currently a rental, but, um, what I'm hoping to do is tear down the house. Um, my husband's deploying this year, otherwise we would be adding on to the clinic. So we're gonna wait till he gets back from deployment and then we're gonna try to add on. But right now, I thought a parking lot would be nice, so.
Do you get a little crowded and cozy in there much of the time?
A little, yes, we do, actually.
Yeah, my wife used to visit you frequently, so I did make her time to, when it gets crowded.
Yep, so.
Any questions for the young lady? Hearing none, we are probably ready for a motion if there are no further questions or, so.
Do we have to worry about any drainage or anything? Everything is gonna be sloped right and all that?
Um, yep, I'm gonna have, um, Clark paving come in and he is going to kinda offset the slope a little bit. Um, that one usually doesn't have any drainage issues itself, um, and that I know of, so.
Are you gonna build it up enough so the neighbors won't?
Um.
Have any water setting in or is it just the same level of what it is now?
We're gonna probably put it at the same level so there is no drainage issues, so.
Public Works Department will be looking for a, a site layout, um, to accompany the parking lot plan.
As long as it's, as long as it's not gonna affect the neighbors, you know, as far as pulling up in their backyard, I have no problem with it, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Move consecutive that we approve the conditional use. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Let's go roll call on this one, Mark, please.
Oscar Lou.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Move on to the next one. A variance D A K Properties LLC at one thousand one East Fourth Avenue. Has applied for a variance for our side yard, side corner yard setback of twelve feet versus twenty feet to construct an detached twenty-four by twenty-four garage on forty-three foot wide lot located at the left ten oh one East Fourth Avenue. Legally described as the west one half of lot nine and all of lot ten, block twenty-nine, leasing edition, City of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. The said real property is a stone R two single family residential district.
Um, this was published in the paper. Neighbors were notified. Um, got two responses in your packet, um, both in favor. One says that, uh, parking from alley only, um, which is what we would recommend. There is current parking on the west side right now, what they use coming off of Gamble Street. Um, it's a small corner lot to begin with, so they're asking for the variance. That way they can put a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, uh, pull in from the alley, have enough room for a double wide garage there. I don't see that looking here at all for them.
But he is coming in from the alley?
Yes, coming in from the alley. Um, he did say that since there is that, that pad there, they'll probably use that to park alongside the garage, but not pulling in to park parallel across sidewalk. It'd just be an extra pad there to use.
From the alley?
Yeah, from the alley, yeah.
From the alley, so he won't be blocking the side?
Right, yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, it's maybe there are small lots again, right?
Yep, I tell you what, those small lots in this one here probably wasn't fifty footer at one time, pardon?
Actually, no, it wasn't. This was platted back in the day as a thirty-five foot, foot wide lot.
And then they got.
Fifty, yeah.
No, it's forty-three feet now. And they only got seven more feet, eight feet.
Yeah, well, second D, the foster mom lay there really. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Move consecutive that the variance be approved. Discussion. Hearing none, I assume we're ready to vote. We better go roll call again here.
Sonny.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes.
Oscar Lou.
Yes.
Larson.
Yep.
Motion carried.
All right, next item. Conditional use permit for Carl I Clinic, uh, at fourteen fifteen North Sandborn, Maxwell Ri- Ri- Ri-son. Watch fire signs on behalf of Carl I Clinic has applied for a conditional use permit to install and operate an electric message, message center in a residential district located at fourteen fifteen North Sandborn Boulevard. Legally described as lots one through six in east half, the vacant Edmund Street, block twelve Capitol Edition, City of Mitchell, South Dakota. Said real property is owned R two, single family residential district.
Again, this published in the paper, neighbors were notified. Um, we have three that didn't make the packet. They're in front of you, I gave them to you. One of them had concerns over traffic in the area for blocking the view. Um, their plan is to remove the existing sign that's on the corner there and put up this new sign. Um, the existing is twelve feet wide, this one would be six feet wide. Um, their current sign is not in the site triangle at all, so it does meet code with that, although there are some concerns with that intersection.
It's a busy intersection.
It's a busy intersection on a four lane.
They're not here at all.
Um, to represent themselves, but code states that, um, electric messes, that, that, electric message center in, um, residential has to be a conditional use. Um, there are some stipulations they have to abide by for time of day that it can be on, um, the light, things like that. Um, I would recommend that if this were to be approved, um, they're kinda showing it on the east side of their existing. I would ask that it be a condition that it would go to the west side, so keep it as far back as possible if they're using that same location, if that makes sense to you.
Do I hear discussion?
So follow city ordinance for being out of the sight line, although, you know, I was just looking at it earlier today, it looks like if I were parked at the stop sign, it would block my view for the, the northbound traffic on Sandborn.
Yes, and I think the issue that comes with this intersection is it's a bigger widest, wider turning radius than what most of your blocks are, so that way your stop sign is actually set back a little further than the level. And that's why I would say it needs to be on the west half of the existing if it were to be approved.
On the west half of the existing, where is it?
Yeah. You can see on this one. They've got it on the east. I'd like to have it on the west.
On the west side of the south side?
On the west side of their existing sign.
Yeah. Yeah. Do I hear a motion to that affair?
To what effect, the recommendation from Mark?
Yeah.
But it has to be a solid sign. Can't be anything on the stand.
They could put it up on stilts, it's just that's, that's what they provided us for application, it was this sign right here.
But I know six foot might help the sight, you know, from when you park there and all this and that. You slowly pull out to see better and all this and that, but it's still, it's, uh... I don't know, I guess if, uh, if they, I mean, the old sign's coming out, right?
Yeah, the old sign would come out, this one would go in its place.
So can it go back a little bit further? How much further would have to be to meet the?
It, where their existing sign is, meets code one hundred percent already.
Okay.
So what I.
But it's just the height wise, is it because of the electric?
It's because of the electric.
Sonic, so.
That's, that's.
That's why.
Yep.
Well, I'll vote favor it as long as it's on the, the west side, like Mark recommends to the.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Move consecutive that the variance be approved with this initial stipulation. Discussion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. I hear again, I think we better go roll call.
Penny.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Oscar Lou.
Yes.
Larson.
Yep.
Motion carried.
All right, next item. Variance Jason Bates at eleven twelve North Raleigh has applied for a variance for maximum lot coverage of fifty percent versus forty-five percent to construct a detached garage located at eleven twelve North Raleigh Street, legally described as lot sixteen, block four, of VA Scotts Edition, City of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. This property is owned R two as well. Okay, what's Mr. Bates planning to do there?
Um, this was published in the paper, neighbors notified, had two in your packet in favor, and then also two more that didn't make the packet, but you have in front of you. Uh, he's looking to build a detached garage on the alley side of his existing garage. Um, with doing all the math of everything that he has there, it's fifty percent instead of forty-five for this zone, it's actually, I think, forty-nine point three two percent is where his lot coverage comes in at. Um, of course, he wouldn't be able to have a door on the south side, or excuse me, on the, uh, the east side, it'd have to be on the south side because there's not the sixteen feet that would be required. Um, Jason's here, if you have any questions for him at all with this project.
Talk to us.
Uh, just, I was actually planning on moving my hot tub to the back, cause that wind swirls through there and it's pretty brutal in the winter time, and then the, the excesses, you know, I have four kids, bicycles, lawnmowers, snow blowers, just, my garage is full, you can't even walk in there. So just a little more, it probably wouldn't be quite big enough for an actual garage, it's more of a storage.
Two here.
More of a storage shed, yeah.
Not much mowing, does it count?
I hate mowing. I have horrible allergies, when I mow it, it just beats me up, so.
So you're saying you want to move your hot, are you gonna tear that down, that what you put up there, or?
I wasn't planning on, I was just gonna put my patio furniture under there. There wasn't lawn there anyway, it was pink rock before, so.
And how much space you got between the two, built?
Well, I'll, I'll do, I'll meet the three feet, uh, from the alley and the side and the, and the, um, garage, so.
I guess you don't like mowing, you might have a nice snowdrift in there, so you get to scoop, huh?
I, I got a four, I got a four wheeler to plow, so that's okay.
Uh, I just.
And then Vinian?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's right at fifty percent, taking the lot?
Yep, just under, but yeah.
Lots of fifty footer in it?
I believe so, I believe so.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen? Do you have any questions more from Mr. Bates?
And it's all alley and parking lot there, so water won't be an issue. It's already.
Already?
Yeah. It's not gonna affect anybody.
I don't see any disapproval, I mean, disapproval from you?
Nope.
Everybody's approving it?
All in favor.
All in favor? I don't see no problem. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Move consecutive that the variance be approved. Good luck on your project.
Thank you, sir.
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. A flat of lots A one, A two, and A three, a subdivision of lot A of Mahner's subdivision in the northeast quarter of section fourteen, township one oh three north, range sixty west of the fifth parallel Meridian, Davis County, South Dakota, as requested by Keith and Kerry.
So Keith and Kerry own this house right here. Um, they own all the land that goes to the backside of it. Um, I believe the intention is to sell what will be lot A two to, uh, Justin and Kerry. Um, there is an easement that goes with this plat in case some reason, um, the back lot and the front lot are two different owners, there is an easement on that property right here where the existing driveway is. Um, there is a, a undeveloped road on the west side of all this, which does grant access for lot A one. So ingress, egress is all taken care of with it. Um, it is in our zoning jurisdiction. Um, the county has heard this already, um, they recommended approval at planning permission, uh, commission will hear tomorrow.
And our council will hear it later.
Yep.
I guess the thing to do here is.
Oh, yes.
What the county's planning permission is to think recommended, huh?
Well, I'll go by that, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Move consecutive that we approve the plat as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Next one, a flat of lot hole two of Pitsey's addition in the south half, southwest quarter of, the southwest quarter of section twenty-four, E one oh three north, R sixty west of the fifth parallel Meridian, Davis County, South Dakota, as requested by Keith and Mark.
This is outside the ETJ, but within the three mile. Um, Scrubles own the house to the front. Um, there's a right of way that goes along this whole area, and then they own two lots back here, it's across the lot line, so the county's making them replat it to include all in one. Um, and they're gonna put a shed on it in the future. Um, county has heard this, uh, last Tuesday, they recommend approval, um, and then county commission will hear tomorrow.
And looks like same song second verse, doesn't it?
Yeah. And I'll do it again, I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Did I hear second?
Yep.
Second.
Move consecutive that the plat be approved as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Item number thirteen. Flat of block two, block five of Brooklyn Heights First Edition, a subdivision of block two and tracks two and three of block one, all in cranes addition in the southeast quarter of section thirty-four, one oh three north, sixty west of the fifth parallel Meridian, City of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota, as requested by Keith and Mark.
Uh, this is following along with their master plan, um, just finding out another lot down there to start construction on a house.
County look at this one too?
Nope, this is all inside city limits.
This is all us?
Yep.
Any questions here? We looked at a pretty good master plan on that, I'll walk back, so as long as they're following it, I guess we.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Probably shouldn't, I could do my.
Nope.
Move consecutive that we do approve this plat. There's a discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Item number fourteen. Another flat of lots one through four, block one, lots one through twelve, block two, and lots one through twenty-three, block three, lots one through thirty, block four, lots one through forty-six, block five, lots one through five, block six, Patchy, Cheyenne, Anne, Sioux Falls, and Dakota avenues, all in the South Lake subdivision, excuse me, South Lake Estate subdivision, in the City of Mitchell, in the southwest quarter of section four, township one oh three north, range sixty west of the fifth parallel Meridian, Davis County, South Dakota, as recommended by CJ and consultant. Anybody in the audience wanna talk to us, or Mark?
Yeah, I, I can give a brief explanation of it to begin with. Um, you approved the master plan for this area back in December of twenty-one. Um, since then, the road names have all been approved by LEPC. Um, it was originally platted with a road going through the middle where Dakota Street that came all the way up and came around. Um, so he's vacating that, vacating the alleys, um, creating his lots that he'll have to sell off. So you can see on here, the existing, this is actually the fourth time that this area has been platted. Um, the yellow is the existing that's going on, uh, the red is what's gonna be the proposed new plat for it. He's not changing anything with Indian Head Drive, that still continues all the way around. It's just these inner roads, taking out the alleys in the back, and then Dakota Avenue going all the way out and Cheyenne going all the way out. Um, those were different names before, those are changed right now with this resolution of the plat.
Okay, and there's a road off to the side of that behind it, isn't there not?
There's a unimproved road right here, which is Indian Head still, and then Dakota Street is right here, which is also another unimproved road. I mean, will probably be still an unimproved road, probably gonna ask them to vacate that road. They use it as a driveway already, so they'll have to get a couple easements on that. Um, there is, in the research of doing this one, there's two Dakota streets. There's Dakota Street right here on this plat that was platted in seventy-eight, and up on Maui on fifty-fourth street, there's the eleven or twelve lots east of the airport there. There's an unimproved road on that, there's actually Dakota Street as well, that the county approved back in oh seven. So the county created the second one of the same name. So that's why getting one of the two to vacate would help, um, nobody even knows that those streets are named.
So you're saying, just in order to make the road names easier to vacate that Dakota Street?
Mm-hmm. If you look, I mean, they've been using it.
I know, I, I know where that's at.
As a, as their.
Used as a driveway.
Driveway already with some landscaping and everything in there.
Some use it to get back to their, uh, lots back there already, so.
But we will be having the other access off of Indian Head will get finished, uh, hard surface urban gutters, they'll be able to use that to get to their roads back there, or their lots.
So say that we don't vacate, if the time comes, I mean, is it just gonna have to be a name change then?
It, yeah, it'd just be a resolution for a name change for one of the two.
So, okay.
Yeah, if they choose not to vacate it, or doesn't get vacated by any of the boards, it's still gonna stay an unimproved road. The city has no intention of.
Improving.
Improving that road.
Yeah, and those, uh, internal roads that he's putting on, they all connect to all of them too, don't they?
Yes, they will. Yep.
So you're not gonna have anything landlocked and?
Nope.
Fire trucks will be able to get where they need to go?
Jill, is any problem?
Uh, I tell you what, that's been out in the middle there, has been open for as long as I've lived in Mitchell, so it's a good thing something is going to happen there. You guys don't have any city folks with questions on there so far, do you?
No, we have no concerns.
Anybody got anything else to comment or talk to us about? If not, we are ready for any motion. I'll move you through.
Second.
Move consecutive that the plat be approved as provided. Now, is this the actual plat, or is this a proposal?
Nope, this is the actual plat.
This is the actual plat, okay.
And registered deeds will be very happy that they're plating it all at one time because then they know how many sleeves they need for this plat. They'll be able to do this all in one, as opposed to a hundred and forty-four different ones.
Right, so.
And it'll be nice for hardwood equalization as well, so.
Good.
All right, we have a motion, we have, we've had discussion, this is further. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. We better go roll call on this one, too.
Oscar Lou.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Next one, a plan approval. Miners, Terriaki, what's that?
Teriyaki.
Teriyaki, five oh three North Sandborn neighborhood shopping district. What's going on there, Mark?
So we've known over the past few years, easy come, easy go has been there, um, it's been for sale a few different times, um, has recently been purchased. Um, they are, it's currently a convenience store, gas station, um, they could keep it as a convenience store if they did some food sales there, um, along with household items. They'd like to switch it to more of a restaurant. Um, it did not make the packet, but the site plan is showing all the parking there, I've put that in front of you, and I also have it right here. Um, it's on, it's about fifty seats just under that, um, what they have for a, a plan for inside, so they need about seventeen parking spots, it's one per three, and I believe this shows nineteen or so. Um, I'll let, uh, the applicant speak since they are here, and I know Don's wanting to say stuff.
You know, you know, we don't use that attorney's talk very much.
Oh, I know, I know. Where's Bob's timer?
But this is a fun one to talk about.
Somebody pulled it up for you.
Uh, and this is Josh, Josh is one of the principals, and actually, it's, it's Maya's, it's M Y A, so that's just, that's just a typo. Um, but, uh, the, uh, the excavation of the tanks is starting today, uh, they're, they're, they're knocking up the concrete, and, uh, then I think they're coming in in a, a week or so to take the tanks out. Um, they, um, the owners, uh, are some of the principals in the, in the existing Mexican restaurants in town now, um, El. restaurants in town now, um, El Calupio and, and, uh...
Corona Village.
And they're looking at putting in a, um, uh, fast food isn't quite right, but it would be kind of, it'll be a, um, a, a, kind of a walk, well, I'll let, I'll let Josh explain.
Be more of a, like, a quick service, so you'd come in and order your food, uh, maybe in the future, we would like to see somewhat of a long, like, a dining, but as of right now, with all the labor shortages, it'd just be like quick serve, come order your food, kinda like a little panda garden, so we'd have both oriental food and then other attractions for like all ages, like, we're also gonna have like a smoothie bar, bubble tea, and, um, and maybe more futures in the, in the future, see how it goes from there.
They're thinking about, right now, Mueller Lumber's doing the design, and they've got, um, uh, 40, 40 chairs, uh, so they got tables and then 40 chairs, and, uh, so, uh, it is a change, and so we know we gotta get, uh, permission to change the use, and so that's, that's why we're here.
Thank you. Any questions from these gentlemen?
Yeah, I see you got a walking pool there on the north side there to be determined, so what, how far can they build up to the alley?
Um, I think zero in this zone.
Okay, do we know what the size is right now, between that and...
The, the distance right now?
Between the building and the alley?
Is it on that sight?
Is the alley vacated or not?
The alley, yeah, the alley's vacated.
It goes up to that fence.
Just to, just to the piece by the street.
All on the east side of that fence is vacated.
Uh, it shows that there's 20 feet from the building on this sight plan.
To the alley?
Yep.
No, that's to the... That's to the middle, okay, to the edge of the alley, okay.
Other questions?
I have no other questions, but I'd like to approve it.
It's a second. Move and second that we approve the plan. Is there a discussion on this motion? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote. Let's go, roll call again, please, Mark.
Sonny?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Oscar Lou?
Yes.
Larson?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Thanks. Other businesses, any other business come forward this body at this time? City guys, you got anything to talk to us about? Notice I was concerned about fire trucks getting into that plat.
Look good.
All right, uh, if there's no further business come forward this body at this time, we are ready for public input. If you need to address the city planning committee on an item that was not on the agenda, excluded personnel, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no items will be taken at this time. Please identify yourselves, sir.
My name is Patrick Haynes. I appeared before your committee last month. I wanted to come on to today's agenda, unfortunately, the city's attorney and the planner has conspired against me to not allow my presentation, saying that there was no new information. That is not true at all. My rights have been violated. Now, the last time that I saw somebody giving in passion plea here to, uh, try to assert their rights, you had them arrested, jailed, put on trial, that's not gonna happen today.
Here?
The face mask incident.
That was school.
Okay, well, that's basically the same personnel.
No.
Hold on.
Okay. Well, we don't wanna have that situation today.
Okay.
So there's really no information for me to be able to present you at this time, because you can't act upon it. But taking me off the agenda is criminal, and I wanna enforce that. You just can't shut the public up because they have a problem, because they are, have an issue that they wanna bring in front of this board. That's a country where it's shutting people up for no reason. We have rights in this country, and I wanna enforce those rights.
Then you should talk to someone like Mr. Peterson, who was here with the last group. Other than that, I don't think there's anything we can do for you at this time.
I didn't think, you said very specifically there was nothing you could do, and no, nothing will be acted upon, but I wanna make sure that my issue comes in front of this board again. I wanna make sure that my rights are not trampled upon. I wanna make sure that in the future, that this situation cannot happen. Why would the city's attorney recommend such a thing? What is the conspiracy against me as a small business proposed owner here? Why is the situation grown out of control so quickly? Why are you enabling employees of the City of Mitchell to make that determination?
But you brought this to us, so what's your problem?
I came here seeking exemption with my rights under the state's, under the state's laws, an exemption against engineering, because my proposed building is less than 3,000 square feet. It's very clear, that is what the law is now. They're making a, another determination, not giving me the right to protest or ask for exemption. I believe I have every right to ask for an exemption.
Okay, thank you for your time. Uh, your time is up, thank you for talking to us. Is there any other legislation come forward this body at this time? He's still fighting the...
Trick or treat.
Yeah. The grade, right?
He's with the hard grade.
He, he was approved, his plan was approved by you guys, it's, it's the building, uh, permit that comes to, comes in issue, which is a council issue, not defense.
And John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the 3,000 requirement he's referring to is strictly from the building code, whereas my site, the site development, um, permit, uh, comes from our city ordinance, and that's for any site that is, um, greater than 5,000 square feet.
And actually, Mr. Haynes is incorrect there too, because the, the South Dakota Board of Technical Profession sets that exemption, and it's 4,000 for a restaurant, so that, that isn't even in the realm of thinking. The only thing he has issue with is the city ordinance for drainage, which that's at Joel's discretion, and he's probably gone, given that, given that site tucked between, you know, a business and a residential area tucked between another business and that intersection, very, very warranted. So nothing to do with the building code, they approved his plan, he just needed the drainage plan approved, he didn't wanna get it.
But he didn't say that today, he just said that...
He called, he called me Friday, and we had a discussion, me and Mark and Joel, on that topic, where he'd said, my, my rights are violated, well, what, right? It's an exemption limit set by the State of South Dakota, he meets that exemption, we're not denying that. He's, he's right, he doesn't need an architectural stamp, he doesn't need a engineering stamp for the structure of the building, he doesn't need a HVAC stamp for the plumbing, electrical, and, and, and heating ventilation, but he does, we did want the site, maybe a drainage stamp by a licensed engineer to show that the water's not impeding anybody else, and...
For ordinance, for city ordinance, not any of that.
Right, for the city ordinance, for, for somebody else to assume the risk, not, you know, us or him.
So I know you're saying that it's not our responsibility anymore, we approved all this and that, but if he thinks coming up here, we just have to listen to him and be done, in and out.
What about Jay's?
Huh? Watch out, I feel it.
I gave him a recommendation.
Yeah, whatever Jay would, Jay's running a meeting.
Pipe away back here, Bob. Hold on, John's over at Jay's, I can feel him all, all meeting here. Oh, he adjourned.
And just like today, you approved the plan for this, this drive-through, uh, little panda garden, you know, whatever restaurant, you approved the plan, but he's still got, he may have requirements to have to meet for the building, for the engineering, he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to get a grease trap.
Well, obviously, you guys go through the state, and if anything... Yeah, once you start doing the rest, you guys do the state, you know?
If there is no further business to come forward this body at this time...
There's not, I'm just walking up here. There's no, there's not, I'm just standing up here.